Hey, what do you think of that?
I like that. For other people. I don't want people knowing what I'm cruising around.
Good morning. I would like to end the Fire Chief's Social Hour going on in the back of the building and then call our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Thank you for joining us for the meeting of February 28th, Board of Supervisors. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We'll be led today by Supervisor Michael T.
Thank you. Join me in saluting our great flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with item one on our agenda. That's Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will start with Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few things I wanna highlight for coming up. After this meeting, I'll be traveling to Sacramento to where the San Joaquin Valley Policy Council is having a lobbying day of sorts, meeting with legislators and members of the administration to talk about transportation projects in particular. So we're advocating for dollars for Highway 99 in particular. There's some other projects as well. And then we're also just speaking on water in general and how even though we've had a wet year, there's still a need for water infrastructure projects and to make sure that we continue to help in that area. Thursday is also the California Citrus Mutual Citrus Showcase, held here in Visalia. And in between meetings, I'm hoping to sneak out and catch a session or two on some of the things they're talking about is irrigated lands, as well as the Asian citrus salad and Wong Long Bing and the fight for that. And as a citrus grower, that's something that's very important to me. And Saturday will be Tulare County Farm Bureau's Scholarship Dinner, which I plan on attending. That's all I'd like to highlight.
All right. Thank you very much Supervisor Chucklin.
Thank you, Chairman. Last week, I attended the Visalia Rescue Mission Empty Bowl Annual Event that they do and coming on with our Homelessness Task Force. I think that's a good relationship to maintain with the Visalia Rescue Mission. I also attended and want to thank the staff of HHSA for putting out the outreach meetings. I attended one of the Wellness Center outreach meetings and I think some good information was put out there and hopefully that we can move along with that. I also want to thank the Auditor Controllers Office. I see some folks in the back. Last week, I took a tour of their digs over there and met everybody and just want to thank them for showing me around. And that's really it.
All right Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, I won't be able to be at the Alaska Meeting. We have a meeting up at Temperance Flat, well, the site of Temperance Flat, with the Bureau of Reclamation Assistant Secretary, Acting Assistant Secretary. We've been trying to get him out here for some time to show him the project, and so we have that opportunity. And then Friday, at a place yet to be determined, we're hoping to hold a press conference regarding the flood releases from the Friant Dam. We're estimating at this point over 350,000 acre feet have been released into the channel. And if you've been following that situation, it's not like they really need that water anyplace else. It's creating tremendous problems further up the San Joaquin River with levee breaks and pressure on the system. So those are things that are coming up. And then I want to, oh, this Friday night in Wood Lake, there will be the annual awards dinner for community members, and it's always a great opportunity to network with people there. I encourage members, if they're available, on next, a week from Thursday, in Bakersfield. CSAC will be having a regional meeting at 9:00 a.m. I'm going to be on a water committee, or a water forum, and I would encourage our supervisors to attend if they have time to do so. Thank you.
All right Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We continue to put our groundwater management for the eastern Tulie area together. The only thing that we have to get put in place is our representative from the white areas, which are areas that do not have water district water. They strictly run wells. So once we get that person decided and get them onboard, we'll be pretty well set to move forward. Continue to monitor Success Dam. I was talking to some people from the irrigation districts the other day. They're thinking very seriously maybe of sandbagging the spillway like we did 15, 20 years ago, so we can store an extra 15,000 acre feet of water. So 15,000 to 20,000 acre feet of water. So hopefully that can move forward in a year like this. And also with the J Street Bridge Project trying to be built, it'd be great if we could kind of shut that water down for a while, so at least they could get the foundation built out in the channel, so that they can move forward with that project. So those are two things that are kind of on the table right now. So anything we can do to improve storage, anything we can do to improve our recharge basins, we need to do that, especially when you take years like this year where we've had an abundance of water, but we hate to see it all. We don't want it to run out to Tulare Lake. If we can help it, we want to try to keep it here and recharge our groundwater. But I know the slough's been flowing through Porterville. That's helping. And of course, with the river flowing, all those things are gonna help recharge our aquifer. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So I guess you're changing your plans of taking a boat from Allen'sworth all the way to Sacramento?
Yeah, all the way to Sacramento. Can't do that.
I can't do that now.
They stay real, doesn't go either, so we're lost.
All right. Just a few things I wanted to go over. First of all, I wanted to commend our sheriff for another successful round of Operation Babyface in an effort to protect our young people from the horrors that are caused by child sex predator acts. And I really appreciate his outstanding efforts to curb that in our county. Last week Supervisor Crocker and myself participated in the Farm Bureau Youth Leadership Night. That was a great experience where 25 youth from throughout the county came together and got to experience county government night and conducted a mock board meeting and thought it went really well. We have some great young people in this county and we'll be recognizing a big group of them here coming up. Also, I just was gonna make the same plug for the Farm Bureau Scholarship Dinner that will take place this Saturday at 6:00 at the Visalia Convention Center. It's a wonderful event and encourage all to attend who can. That concludes my Board of Supervisors Matters. We will now move on to item number two on our agenda, which is a very exciting item for a Strathmore High Alumni, Mr. Crocker. And he's gonna talk about some of his football playing experience.
Oh, God.
Go ahead Supervisor Crocker. It's up to you bud.
He carried two pails of water.
That's right. We all have a place.
Well, yeah, if the football team could come on up. And I'm happy to have a proclamation. I was a little concerned about the, you know, whether or not they were gonna make it, but you know, spruce, it's terrible.
Morning guys, welcome.
Morning.
Good job.
Morning.
Morning.
Hey, don't worry about blocking us. This is about you guys.
Yeah.
Well, as a, as the president of the Strathmore High Alumni Association, it's a great honor to have these young men up here. From a, from a community standpoint, I know Strathmore, we watch it very closely, and I think all of Tulare County did, as you all, the efforts of your labors for years. We were able to see the success on the field and it was, I was very proud to call Strathmore home and to be an alumnus from this great school. So I'll just read this proclamation. We've got some certificates for all of you. And then I also have something for the coach as well. And if Coach Blackwell, if you'd like to say anything afterwards, or any of the, any of the men would like to, then you're more than welcome to. But today, we want to honor the Strathmore High School Football Team as the 2016 Southern California Division 6A Regional Champions. Whereas Division 6 of the California Interscholastic Federation Central Section is comprised of 16 high school football teams covering Fresno Kings, Kern, Madera, and Tulare Counties. And in a record season, Strathmore High School advanced to the Southern California Division 6A Regional Championship. And whereas in the 2016 season, the Strathmore High School Football Team beat Lindsay High School to become the Bell Game Champions and continued their winning streak, becoming the 2016 East Sequoia League Champions, and played undefeated to win the 2016 Central Section Division 6 Championship. And whereas this marked the fourth Central Section Division Championship for the Strathmore High School Football Team. And whereas Strathmore High School hosted the first ever California Interscholastic Federation State Championship game in Tulare County. And whereas the Strathmore High School Football Team with the 14-0 record won the 2016 Southern California Division 6A Championship against Horizon Christian Academy of San Diego, 62 to 22. And whereas the Spartans have proved that hard work and dedication can lead to success on the field. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Strathmore High School's varsity football team as a 2016 Southern California Division 6A Regional Champions.
We just want to thank you guys. This has been an awesome ride. This is a really good football team, put a lot of time, work, and effort. We've tried to represent Strathmore well, and I can't be more happy to say that this is my football team. And now we, we got 146 days to get ready for the next one. Thank you guys.
All right, everybody look at me right here. One, two, three. You guys are a big group. I gotta get to all of them. All right, I think we got it.
Those are names on them?
Yes.
I thought Mike was going back.
All right. Well, that was exciting. I actually thought Mike Ennis was gonna go to the microphone and talk about wearing a leather football helmet when he played back in the 1800s.
I thought he was gonna go with him and finish his diploma.
All right, well.
I wanted to hear about what Kyler position he played when he was there.
Well, you just keep wanting.
All right, we're gonna move on before this gets too far out of hand. And we'll take up item number three, which is really a great item, very exciting, especially when I looked at this plaque here, and I'll get to talk about it in a second, but right now I'll turn it over to Jason Britt from the Health and Human Services Agency to recognize Jim Waters upon his retirement from the agency and his many years of county service.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CAO, County Council, Jason Britt, HSA's Director. Today, we celebrate Jim Waters' 44 and a half year service to Tulare County. I figured with that amount of time, it warranted a board recognition. Jim came to the county in October of 1972, after spending three years conducting biological research at the UC System. That was one full year before I was born, Jim.
We stole somebody's thunder.
That's almost, his years of service are almost the same as Kyler in my lives combined.
Jim started working for Environmental Health as a registered sanitarian in those days. They now call them registered health, environmental health inspectors. From 1972 to 1990, where he worked in almost all the programs, including hazardous waste, public water systems, the well permit program, and vector control, and many other programs in environmental health. In 1990, Jim was called to duty by the then health director and later agency director, who, to start the Environmental Quality Division, which actually functions as sort of like an internal consultant to many, many of the county department and agencies, which then Jim got involved in with everything from contaminated site cleanup, underground storage tank cleanup, Harmon Field, Sequoia Field, industrial waste discharges, consumer confidence reports, cross connection control, backflow protection devices. So whenever a county facility or department has an issue with anything environmental, Jim is the guy they usually call to help clean up. So it is with great mixed emotions that we wish him well in his retirement, but we are losing a lot of history and a person who has worked with probably, I don't know, too many people to count probably within the county. And so today, on behalf of the entire HSA Agency and family, we wish Jim all the best in his retirement.
Jim knows where the bodies are buried, basically.
All right, Jim. You will get a chance to speak after I present you with the highest, you can come on around here with me. It's my pleasure to present to you the highest honor the county can bestow upon an employee, and that is the county seal on this plaque. This is presented to James E. Waters, the Environmental Quality Coordinator, in appreciation of your years of service and dedication to the community and to Tulare County. And I actually, when I saw this plaque, it was handed to me, I looked over to our CAO and I said, "Is this right?" Because 1972 to 2017, that's an incredible career. And what a tremendous wealth of knowledge we will be losing from the agency. And I appreciate on a personal level, your passion for the subject matter in which you practice your career within. And I remember our time at Harmon Field together and spending a little bit of time in Pixley at some of the dining establishments and.
The El Serapi.
El Serapi in Pixley. And I appreciate your commitment to Tulare County and the Division of Environmental Health and the people that live here as well. So with that, it's my pleasure to present you with this honor.
Thank you.
And we'd love to hear some comments, not 45 years worth, but about your retirement if you would like.
Well, this is deeply appreciated. Thank, I've always felt appreciated by the county. It's, when I worked to work in the early 70s, I'd had a lot of jobs. I always worked, oil fills, roughnecking, things like that, singer saw machines, repairing saw machines, you know. But I'd never seen the dedication that I saw here. That was, that was amazing. I just, it rubs off on you after a while. So I'm gonna miss the county. It's been like a second home to me, and I'm gonna miss all of you. And I thank you very much. This is really nice. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Go ahead Supervisor. Sure, I just want to say I also was the beneficiary of El Serapi, of good Mexican food in Pixley, and a tour of the facility while we were cleaning up Harmon Field, which is one of those projects that had been on the books long before I came on the board and well into my tenure before it actually got completed. But a great project. And I really had a sense that Jim, at that point, you know, he was doing this because he loved to do it. It wasn't because he had an obligation. I mean, he was fully vested, could have retired. He was probably one of those kind of guys who'd work it for 10 cents an hour, I mean, do the math. But I ask people to look at him and say, and ask yourselves, do you really want early retirement? Because look how young he looks. I tell you, I think sometimes people make the mistake of thinking, oh, I want to retire when I'm young. No, find the job that you enjoy doing it and do it as long as you want to do it, until it's no longer fun for you. And I really feel like that's Jim's situation. Jim, congratulations, and thank you for your many years of service. And we just pray that you have a great, healthy, wonderful retirement and look this young 20 years from now.
All right. Thank you very much again, Jim, and may the best years of your life be ahead of you. We will now move on and take up item number four, which is public comments. I have a request from Euler, I'm kidding Euler, I'm just messing with you. Euler Torres from Tulare, and he's gonna be talking to us about Pueblo Fest. Go ahead, Euler.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Euler. I am a resident of Tulare for the last 25 years. And while we've resided here, I perform in a band called Los Malandrinas. You guys have in front of you a packet of an event called Pueblo Fest. I don't know if you guys have heard of it. Pueblo Fest comes from an event that we did before. It was a toy drive, and it became one of the biggest toy drives here, and we worked with Tulare County and HHSA for several years, giving out toys, giving out information. And our posada transformed from that event, which was a Christmas event, into what Pueblo Fest is now. Pueblo Fest is gonna be March 17th, 18th, and 19th. It's gonna be a music festival. We wanted to bring something like the Coachella Music Festival here to our county. And we're very excited. We have some of the top regional Mexican music talent coming in. And we just wanted to see how we can, you know, let the, you guys know out here at the Board, that what we're planning, and we plan to grow. And we've partnered with several nonprofits in the area, who are gonna be giving out information and resources, reaching out. HHSA is also gonna be coming out with the services. During the Christmas time, we did a donation to the, to the kids program that you guys have as well. So we are very supportive of our county. We love where we live. We want to bring people and, from all over the state to come and enjoy our, our area. We believe that we can provide a lot of good services that could be beneficial to our community. And we just want to talk to you guys about Pueblo Fest, so you guys are aware of it. And then Arnaldo will give you guys a little bit more, more information on what Pueblo Fest is. Just want to introduce myself to you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Tacos look really good.
All right, next up, I have a request from Arnaldo.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having us. I am part of Pueblo Fest as well. A couple of things about myself. I grew up in a little town called Gridley, California, up on 99, a place of about 5,000 people. I live in the Bay Area now, but the Central Valley is dear and heart to me, and so it's very important to make sure we're vested in the community. As part of Pueblo Fest, something that's very unique about what we're trying to do here, we've all heard of Coachella, we've all heard of Stagecoach, but what we're trying to do here is trying to bring a music festival with a social purpose. So we're bringing community, culture, and music all under one roof at the International Agrocenter on the 17th, 18th, and 19th. So from our perspective, what we want to do is really highlight the community piece. So we have over 80 nonprofits that are gonna be participating at Pueblo Fest. So music will attract the community, and once they're there, let's inspire them, let's help them, let's support them through health programs. For example, we have motivational speakers. We have about nine motivational speakers lined up. One is a US astronaut who's out of Stockton. His name's Jose Hernandez. So he is coming to Pueblo Fest to talk to the local students. We actually invited over 3,000 Tulare students to come in for the educational component, between the hours of 12 and 4 on Saturday and Sunday. And then on Sunday, we have the McFarland USA Brothers, Danny Diaz, David Diaz, and also Coach White coming as motivational speakers. Again, we also have people from the Silicon Valley coming in to talk about their experiences working at Google, Facebook, and other tech companies. So this is more than just a music festival. The other thing I want to highlight is, we also have the cultural arts, and cultural arts are really important. So we actually have student programs, like at Roosevelt High School in Fresno, Delano, and McFarland Music Programs, and here locally in Tulare, who are gonna be participating. So young kids, youth, coming to speak and also perform their talents. So we want to quarterly invite all of you to come. We have complimentary tickets for you all to be at Pueblo Fest with us. And we also want to recognize that I think it's a great opportunity for an economic stimuli and help the local economy as well. Because, you know, we are gonna bring people, a lot of people locally, but at the same time, there are gonna be people from the outside as well. So I want to thank you for your time. Much appreciated. And like I said, we'll follow up with an email inviting you all quarterly to Pueblo Fest, and we have tickets for you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to speak under a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Board. We will take up our consent calendar at this time. Items five through 27. However, what we are going to be doing is we will take up items five through 21, I'm sorry, through 23, and then we will adjourn, reconvene, and take up the remainder of the consent calendar under a separate motion. So two separate motions here. Any member of the public or Board like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Who have approval, Mr. Chairman?
Of the first?
Yes.
Second.
First chunk of the consent calendar. And we have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Chucklin. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to adjourn as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Tulare County Flood Control District. And we'll take up the balance of the consent calendar, items 25 through 27 at this time.
Who for approval?
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Second?
Second by Supervisor Chucklin.
24 is the only one that's under the Tulare County Flood Control.
Okay. So, okay, so we'll, we'll reconvene. I should have done that differently, but that's okay. We'll, so we will take up just item 24 in this motion. So the motion is from Supervisor Crocker, second from Supervisor Chucklin.
Ennis.
Ennis.
And, you Strathmore kids are just looking too similar. Okay, please vote. All right, motion passes unanimously, and we will now adjourn as the Tulare County Flood Control District and reconvene as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and take up the balance of the consent.
Move approval for the balance of the consent calendar?
We have a motion by Supervisor Chucklin, a second by lip-reading Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. All right, consent calendar passes. And we will now move on to our untimed section of our meeting today and take up item number 28.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CAO Spata and County Council Sullivan.
Peterson.
Yes, Peterson, sorry. Gotta get used to that change. Apologize for that. I'll be very brief. Tim Lutz, Fiscal Operations Director, Health and Human Services. Bringing before the Board today, a couple of changes to positions within fiscal operations. What we're asking is to add two principal account clerk positions and then delete two subsequent account clerk positions. These positions would be assigned to our accounts receivable department and also the public guardian fiscal operations office. And really what this reflects is a realignment that we've had over the last few years within fiscal operations to try and create better opportunities for people who are more experienced, been with the department for a while, to come into a principal level position, provide training, oversight to junior members. When we onboard new people, to provide much better onboarding support. And the long-term goal here is retain knowledge and ensure efficient knowledge. And the long-term goal here is retain knowledge and ensure efficient knowledge transfer within our staff. So the, again, the request would be our deletion of two account clerk positions that are currently vacant, and then adding those two principal account clerk positions that then we would go out and do a competitive recruitment for. There is a small difference between deleting the positions and adding the new ones because these are higher level positions. Those expenses would be covered this year, you know, for budget purposes through social services realignment, of which we have enough growth funds coming into that account to cover that cost. And then the second one in the administrative, on the accounts receivable piece would be covered through our administrative overhead reimbursement within Health and Human Services Agency. So at the end of the day, there is no additional net county cost for the position this year or in subsequent years. So with that, the request is to approve a personnel resolution to change position allocation within Health and Human Services by adding the two principal account clerk positions and deleting two account clerk positions, and approve the attached odd 308 budget adjustment form to change the salary within the agency's appropriations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from members of the public?
Who have approval, Mr. Chairman?
Seeing none, I have a motion by Supervisor Worthy, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Right. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to move on to item number 29, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve Phase Two of the Tulare County Tree Mortality Tree Removal Project.
Good morning, board members. Eric Coyne, CAO's office. Today, we're asking you to approve Phase Two of our Tree Mortality Tree Removal Projects. This is a mistake, typo. In May of 2016, the board approved use of $250,000 from the road funds to be used for tree removal efforts. We did a very aggressive program partnering with county fire, Cal Fire, the county parks, and other members of the county family to remove trees in the Bosch Park area, Bosch Bear Creek Road. And we removed, it's 90% done. We've removed somewhere around 1,200 trees. At a extraordinary cost savings, if I might add. We averaged about $165 per tree for the removals, when statewide, the run-of-the-mole figure you use for these things is about $1,000 a tree. This would not have been possible without the partnership from our state partners at Cal Fire, the use of inmate crews, and the can-do attitude of our county fire department and our road crews who somehow get it all done. Now we're looking at starting the second phase, and we want to focus on the hazard trees in the Posey, Sugarloaf, Panorama Heights area down south. This is an area that was the focus of the cedar fire, and there's a lot of material down there. This map shows the general areas that we plan to work, and this is the areas we covered with our environmental clearance. The, the main focus will be on the private property areas and the pass-through as you go through these communities, the main exit and egress routes in a, in a fire or a disaster. We will be doing the public right-of-way. It's about approximately 15 feet on the other side of the road. We will be also expanding into appropriate areas of private property where a tall tree could fall into and block the road. This is not done as a convenience as is done as a health and safety matter to, to provide exits from the area during a fire or that kind of situation. So what will be different about Phase Two, we will be coordinating now, we're moving into more populated areas. And so this is going to require working with the communities quite a bit more closely in order to secure the permission to enter their property, remove a hazardous tree, and then also in a, in an area with higher traffic than Bosch Park and Bear Creek, it's going to require a lot more work with our county roads and public works to, to do this in a safe manner and not overload our workforce. We are working with our safety partners to design this project. We're estimating we may spend somewhere between $90,000 and $125,000 on this. We will know the cost will be determined. This is a little bit of a different situation than what we've done before. It's going to be a little bit more dynamic because of terrain and traffic. The workflow will be less. We expect to get less done with the inmate crews because of the travel time to get them there to the work site. But they do an awesome job. And also, Cal Fire has made some resources available at their expense. They have people trained, stationed in the South Valley as a preventive measure. And so they're going to be coordinating that as well. And that's a leverage by the, the unit commander. That is something that they're already there, they're already paid for. And so we'll see how that looks, but it's, it's going to be a tremendous leverage effort. The other thing that will be a little different about this is going to be because of the, some of this passes through Forest Service areas, some of this passes through private property, county roads, some of the terrain, it's, it may not be safe to cut the trees and chip them and blow the chips as you go, as we did in Bosch and Bear Creek, which is a more rural area. We may have to transport these to a safer place to store the trees or to cut them up for firewood and get rid of them, whatever that takes. So the, there is a second project we're looking at, which is in the northern area, near Heartland Camp. And so this is, the Oak Timberline Fire Safe Council has a state responsibility area grant. This is a chance to piggyback with them and do things that their grant won't do. And as you go into Heartland Christian Camp, you pass through some county roads, and there's some federal, you know, roads across federal lands, and then there's some county roads. So this is designed to, it's not a huge amount of money, but to fill the gaps and make their project much more efficient. And so that is something we're working with not only the Timberline Fire Safe Council, but the Forest Service and others we're working with aggressively. So this shows that area up in the northern part of the county. Again, this was a group effort. This is, we basically are the administrators to help them do the business for us. But this is, it took an enormous amount of support, one from the Board of Supervisors to be able to use the available funds that could be used for this purpose, to protect our roads and protect the public. Cal Fire, State OES, County Fire, County OES, our Resource Management Agency, we're getting to know those road crews very well because, I mean, they really, it takes a lot of coordination to get this done. And then when I refer to the task force members, I mean, of course, members of the public as we do our outreach and we have the grassroots coalitions, the fire safe councils, and the residents. I have several recommended actions as outlined in your agenda item, but the two main ones is, we're asking the board that you formally recognize this tree removal that takes place on private property serves a public safety purpose. This is, this is not a convenience for property owners. This is, if a tall tree blocks the road, you can't get out of there. Bad things are going to happen. And this project area was chosen by Cal Fire and County Fire as, we have a lot of need in this county, but the South Valley area, we have several mountain communities that they are really concerned about, and they want to get ahead of this problem. So the, the other big thing is to approve the, the balance of the expenditure of the road funds that you set aside last year to do these two potential projects. And so Heartland and also Posey and the Sugarloaf area. So with that, I would answer any questions. We also, Cal Fire is here today. One of the people who's kind of led the charge force is Dave Shai. He's got an army behind him. But Neil has become best friends with this guy and our fire chief as they figure out what we can do, and more importantly, how we should do it, how we shouldn't do it. We also have had the support of Paul Fuller and folks from the Fire Safe Councils down south, in order to get people to turn out for meetings, get those safety messages, and get them ready for when we go out, assuming your approval, to start working hazard trees and private property.
Okay, great. Supervisor Ennis?
Eric, I think this is a very good program. And I think that getting the folks inside these subdivisions in our mountain communities to fill the right paperwork out so we can go on their property, not only keep the tree from falling across the road, but maybe falling across their cabin or their home and destroying it. So it's very important that that paperwork be put in.
Okay. Supervisor Worthy?
I wanted to commend Eric and our staff and our chief and the CDF, Cal Fire, pardon me, and our partners in this engagement. I, I do appreciate the effort that's been made and the effectiveness of the program. I do want to call out, recall to people's minds that the magnitude of the problem of dead trees on the national forests and public lands in Tulare County when it was last counted, and I believe when they flew in September, was over 8 million trees. To date, I think it's probably fair to say that we have probably knocked down no more than maybe 150,000 of those trees on all these public and private lands. To the point that was made by Supervisor Ennis, a big shout out to the utility companies because actually, if you have a tree that's in danger of falling on your cabin, if it's electrified and you've got electrical service, they have done a yeoman's work, both Edison, PG&E, in taking out these trees and removing them. Caltrans has been very aggressive in taking out trees that are in danger of falling on state highways. And so there are, there are positive things out there, but the magnitude of the problem is such that it's a little disappointing that, especially on the Forest Service part, that more was not done to try to remedy the situation, remove trees that could have been merchantable and that sort of thing. But be that as it may, I want to, you know, I don't want to leave it on a negative note, but really on a positive, that the partners with our county, and it's been a very cost-effective system. We really thought this, that when we, when we allocated $250,000, we really anticipated that was going to just be the beginning of a down payment, that we would be spending a lot more than that. But because of the effectiveness of working with Cal Fire and our partners in this situation, it's been very cost-effective. And so my hats off to all those who've been involved. Thank you, Eric.
Any further questions or comments?
I just want to say I'm in support of this. I think anytime that we can do prevention, we'll, you know, it may cost us right now, but imagine the costs later when labor and whatnot, even though it's private property, it's, it's going to help our, our crews.
Supervisor Crocker?
I just want to thank Eric and the rest of the staff that's worked on it. When, when I was with PG&E, that was something that we took very seriously and we, we dealt quite a bit with. The, there are three suggestions in looking at the, the staff report. I think if we're, as far as the US Forest Service obtaining permission on, on the federal lands, I think it would be wise to utilize our Washington lobbyists to try and assist in that effort, if, if that makes sense, to try and expedite that so that we can clean up and get in those areas. The Sierra Nevada Conservancy, they also, they've reached out to me and said that they have dollars specifically to assist with seeking state grants to help with any tree mortality-related work that we're doing. So I would encourage staff to also reach out to them as far as if we need additional dollars down the road, which I think we, we all know that we probably will. And then just to, to piggyback on Supervisor Worthy's comments, that PG&E, for the Heartland area, I'm not as familiar with Southern California Edison's program, but for the Heartland area, PG&E does serve that area, and they have a rigorous debris removal program that goes far beyond the, the standard, you know, if there's a tree within the right-of-way, it is expanded to whether it's close to a, a building or within a certain amount of feet between the public right-of-way. And so if we can utilize other people's dollars to help us achieve what we can, just to go to that point, we can extend the dollars even further. So, thank you.
All right. I see that we have someone from the public wishing to speak.
I'm Paul Fuller. I live in Posey, have for 26 years, so I know the area pretty well. First, I'd like to thank all of the fire agencies, Tulare County Fire Department, Cal Fire, Forest Service, OES, because they saved us. Because that fire, the cedar fire, came right into the edge of our community, and we only lost a few cabins way up in the forest. So really, a big thank you for them, because it really saved us. But we know we're still at risk because of all of these dead trees. And we, we really need this work done. You mentioned Southern Cal Edison. They're very active in the area. They've taken out a lot of trees. They're still working on it. But it's only those that are near a power line. We have a lot of them that aren't near power lines that need to be taken out. So obviously, we support this proposal. No doubt about that. But as an aside, first of all, we, we've been working with the county as far as helping to identify people who need to sign rights of entry. And we're, we're working very closely with them. We have people gathering information, and we'll share that and, and work closely. And one other thing I'd like to add, our normal fundraiser we have in the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend this year is going to be the Cedar Fire Recovery Program. And we're going to use the funds that we raised there to help with the evacuation procedures that, that the Greenhorn Mountain Veterans Association did in Glenville. A lot of our people went down there, and we're going to use our funds from our fundraiser to help improve that, so it'll make it a little better. So we'll invite you to come to our fundraiser Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any additional public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for action. I think this is a great program, and I really appreciate all the collaboration between the various jurisdictions and agencies. A motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Lumberjack Worthy. All in favor, please vote. All opposed, please vote. No one's opposed, it passes unanimously.
And I'm okay.
What's that?
I'm a lumberjack, and I'm okay.
What's wrong with this?
Lumberjack Worthy.
Work all night and sleep all day.
All right. Now we're going to move on on our agenda and take up item number 30, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize limiting the monthly bottled water allocation to no more than 50 gallons per household.
Eric Coyne again. We've been very aggressive, as you know, with the board's support to provide drought relief for those that are left without water or have contaminated water. Since 2014, we've, we've secured and dispensed almost $3.5 million just in bottled water. Obviously, we're working towards permanent solutions, other solutions, but this has allowed people some stability while we're working on those. Our caseload has been over 2,000, and it's dropped now to about 1,800. Part of those reductions are because we're hooking up homes aggressively in the Porterville area. So as they go off service, we monitor this program very closely. And as they find a solution, they're purged from the rolls and, and that effort is refocused. What's happened now is this existing grant has still got two years to run, and yet, without changes, without changes made on February 15th, we would have run out of money before we could ask for new money. And so we made a decision within the county family to reduce the water deliveries substantially in order to provide some relief to everybody that we could. This is designed to make sure that there is some bottled water relief until we can have a chance in April to ask for more money with your approval to, to continue this. So under this, we would, if you have a one-member household, you receive 18 gallons per month. That's based on half a gallon of drinking water per day. That also would apply to two family members. They would get 30 gallons. But then for anybody above that, it would limit it to 48 gallons, regardless of household sizes. We have, we have, our biggest household on the record right now is, is 16 members within one household. So the other thing, if we are successful with our funding request from the state, we would plan to shift from six packs of one-gallon bottles to five-gallon bottles. We're paying $7 for the six-pack of the one-gallon bottles. If we go to the If we go to the five-gallon bottles, because of efficiencies with our vendor, it drops to like four bucks. So that would greatly extend the outreach at a reduced cost. At that point, because they're five gallons, they'd be limited to 50 gallons per household. So we have also, we've limited the program eligibility, we're proposing to do that to owner-occupied residences only. Renters are obviously in need of water, but it is landlord's responsibility to have a safe, habitable home and that includes providing water. So under the proposed changes, landlords would, again, they've had the responsibility to provide water. We would reinforce that by targeting the relief efforts just to owner-occupied dwellings. We would also cap this, this is a temporary program, it could go away in the blink of an eye when the state funding stops and we remind our recipients of that every time, every chance we get. We would now limit this to the current caseload and as they move to permanent solutions, they would be dropped. We, in anticipation of action today, when we reduce the water deliveries mid-month, we sent a mailer, a bilingual mailer, to every home that receives water by mail. We also have included one through the Sparklets deliveries with every water delivery. So they know that this is, again, a temporary program and it's subject to state funding continuing. We also would revise our applications. If new funding comes, there would be a new application and it would require the applicant to show proof of homeownership, tax bill, mortgage payment, that kind of thing. So our request, we will be requesting from the state water board a new funding request not to exceed 2 million. Well, actually, the actual request will be about closer to 1.9 million. This would allow us to provide water to this caseload until March 2019 or when the funding is exhausted. We would love to be put out of business with permanent solutions. With Phase 2 of Porterville coming on, that's going to take several hundred people off. With the Seville system coming online down the road, that's going to reduce demand. With Munson coming on, we're in the process of construction that under your direction, that will also provide solutions. We also, in addition to these proposed bottled water changes, we've been talking to the state about those that have drilled wells through other programs. They've drilled replacement wells with funding that's available through self-help. We've talked about supporting their effort to do point-of-use devices. Maybe they have a new well and it has water supply, but it has a contaminant that could be filtered out. So while that would not go through that, us, that would be coordinated with them. If somebody has a permanent solution, then we would take them off the bottled water to redistribute that aid to those that need it. And with that, any questions, please?
Any questions? Supervisor Crocker?
I'm just curious as far as if we've received any feedback from providing the notices of the change.
We had, in the first two weeks, we had, I believe, 75 phone calls to our bottled water hotline. We've had some questions. We get questions all the time. I don't know if Brill is here today, but we have a whole team that's doing bilingual outreach and a lot of these questions, you know, are self-evident. They either have moved or they're trying to sign back up, but really it's been fairly positive. This week, we've had 10 calls and these are mostly asking about questions about the service, not so much, I would say, outright complaints. We are working on this, we have made it clear at your direction since we started that this was a temporary program and we're trying to help as much as we can with the aid that we can get. I should note that on the April 4th, if you allow us to go forward with the request to the water board, it'll be the same meeting that they're considering many millions of dollars for funding for Phase 2 for Porterville. There's no guarantee that money will be forthcoming. But we think that these changes are essential in order to extend service to those that have limited resources as long as possible. And that's why we really are asking to formalize the limits, cap the program to the existing client base, and also to focus on owner-occupied residences.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have a question, just a comment. One thing that Eric touched on, I think it's important to note that we're looking to extend the financing and the supply that we currently have and we do not have a guarantee of a future funding allocation. When we know, if we knew differently, we could perform differently, but it's not like we could go ahead and, you know, advance the same amount of water we have been and then come back from the state and get retroactively reimbursed for that. That's not the case here, which is why it's important for us to go forward in the way that we are. The other thing I want to point out too is that we get a weekly report from the Health Human Services Agency about well drilling and one of the things we have seen is that the number of wells that are no longer, you know, the bad wells are really diminished. So there's fewer and fewer and fewer bad wells where there's no water or they need to drill new wells. And as an example, we're in the process now of doing a project in Munson, which will take a lot of folks off of this. I mean, it's a small community, granted, but what I noticed with interest was that the house, one of the homes which is on the other side of the street that will not be a part of this system we're putting in, just drilled a well. So people are drilling wells, we see well drillers all over, the demand is way down. I'm assuming that consequently it's not, you know, the price gouging has probably also been relieved somewhat. And so this problem is being resolved, obviously, although the water we're having now that's happening to recharge, I'm curious what's happening in Porterville, is having effect in some areas where we had shallow wells that were adjacent to aquifers that are easily accessed by rivers and streams. So it's a necessary step for us to take. If you don't take this step, people would just be gladly continue to receive water, you know, kind of regardless of how badly they need it. So it's, we have to go through this process. I support the way we're doing it. I think it makes sense to do it the way we are and it's financially responsible and it's time to move on.
You asked about the outreach and the feedback we've had. Biggest challenge recently has been coordinating with the ongoing efforts to get people to hook in and opt-in to service in Porterville. Some people, their wells have come back a little bit, they have water. That water is not going to be a long-term supply. I'm not a water quality expert, but everybody knows that water is coming back and it's not the same quality as it used to be and when the water's out of the river, they're going to be right back where they are.
Go ahead Supervisor Ennis.
Yeah, Eric, I think that's what we emphasized at the meeting at Granite Hills, to tell people, what's going on right now is not permanent. And we went through five years of drought. If you don't take advantage of this to hook up when you're in that sphere of influence, it's going to cost you probably $12,000 down the road to hook up to that system. So it behooves you right now to hook up the system. Don't worry about that. Cap your well and move on because we're not going to have the leniency that we did in this last drought. If you don't hook up and you run out of water and you're in that sphere of influence, you will hook up or you probably will be red-tagged, which I didn't bring that up at the meeting. I didn't want to, I don't want to be a bad guy, but people need to know, they need to, if they're in that sphere of influence, this is once in a lifetime. I mean, I've never seen anything like this happen in the county before, where everything's paid for and all you've got to do is hook up. And another thing I'd like to bring to mind is I hope we don't have marijuana raids out here and see these nice big containers of water we're giving people out there watering plants. I mean, let's use some common sense and get on board with this thing and do things right. So that's all I have.
Supervisor Chucklin?
Yeah. Eric, for the folks who, the landlords, are they aware that they won't be receiving water if they're renters?
Yes.
Okay.
This has been well telegraphed and I didn't bring one of our notices, but I mean, it's bilingual and that statement's in red. It's temporary. This could go away. The other thing that's beyond our control, we're going to go up there and ask for more money for this drought relief. Most of the state thinks the drought is over. The same agency is focused on Orville and other flood-related issues now that are causing drinking water problems. And so, I mean, there's no, again, there's no guarantee that this funding will be around very long. And I think following the direction, unless that's changed, the direction you've always given us is when the state funding ends, this program ends. You know, we've made our first priority permanent solutions, we've made this our second priority because it's immediate relief, but this program without changes was costing us $150,000 a month just for the water. That's not the admin, that's not all the time, the effort it takes to get it to them, to qualify them and everything else. With these changes, we've dropped this down to about $93,000, $94,000 a month. But this is, the end is coming.
Tailing off of that, the provider you talked about, the costs, you know, from the six-packs to the five-gallons, it's a better deal. Who is the provider and would the individuals who have landlords who may not be providing be able to contact them and purchase water at a discounted rate for themselves?
We have asked and Sparklets is, you know, we threw it out for different bidders and Sparklets was the one that was willing to drive it to their door. You can imagine this is a huge relief effort with an armada of trucks. And we have been working closely with our Sparklets coordinator. They said they are willing, if people want to continue the bottled water service, to do that. I don't know that I can speak to whether they will get the same wholesale cost. We're getting a huge volume cost from them, but I know that they're going to make every accommodation they can for these people. They're on a first-name basis with these people after delivering water to their door for more than a year. So they know these people frankly better than we do.
Well, I'm hoping they will and if we can extend that to them, the wish for that, because, you know, my only concern, I understand we can't continue to pay for these, you know, landowners who are absent or not doing it, but, you know, this is also a health and safety issue for those folks who may not be able to afford it. So if we can put something in place for them to be able to get that water at a discounted rate, that would be good.
Look into it.
Thank you.
Eric, I know that this is definitely a reduction and it's not an easy decision, but, you know, this is a temporary program and we knew when this, when we started this program, thankful to state grant funding that allowed the county to provide water to those in need, but we don't have the same fiscal resources to continue this program absent state funding. So given the temporary nature, I do see this coming to an end. But Supervisor Ennis kind of brought up an interesting point when he was talking about seeing these containers watering marijuana plants in some areas. Would you just go into a little bit of the abuse of this program that is certainly something that caught my attention?
Sure. We have our county-wide bottle program, bottled water program which we're talking about. We have a separate, smaller thing that's focused just on Seville. And when we were doing outreach in Seville and bottled water out there, they found during a flyover that there were people growing marijuana. Somebody knocked on the door and what caused a lot of distress, because I heard about it directly from the governor's office, a photo goes to the governor of a child with our relief bottled water and she's earning her allowance, her My Little Pony, literally her job is to water the marijuana plants. Well, they were cut off immediately. We made it very clear, the community, we had a community meeting just for that occasion, invited a sheriff's representative and I said, "Look, we know that this isn't representative of the community as a whole, but a couple people here have jeopardized everybody's solution. So we will be looking," and we made a request specifically for another flyover. And so that's about as far as I get involved with the sheriff department and code enforcement. They obviously operate on their own mission there, but we try to be very aggressive with that. And I would say in that case, we've had a couple of neighbors who are trying to do the right thing who have called and given us tips and we forward every single one of them.
And, you know, I had heard from a constituent about bottled water being sold.
That may happen, we don't know. We think too, there's a couple reasons we want to shift to the five gallons. One, it's a lot harder, not many people want to buy a big five-gallon jug. And we realize this is going to be a little bit more for people to wrestle. But for Sparklets, who's literally reinvented their bottled water distribution based on Tulare County, we're, nobody is doing what we're doing and the scale we are in the Western United States. They can bottle and purify and fill these bottles here locally as opposed to shipping in one-gallon containers and they're passing that savings on to the county and through the county to the recipients. So we think that if somebody was marketing water, I mean, I can't tell you with 1,800 people that there isn't somebody that's going to game the system. It's going to be a lot harder and there's a strong disincentive now for that.
Okay, great. Glad to hear that. Any additional questions or comments from board members, members of the public? Any comments or questions?
Good morning, members of the board. Maria Herrera with Self-Help Enterprises, I'm here in Visalia. I just wanted to piggyback on the comments that Supervisor Chucklin made. I think, I understand that the county right now is in a difficult position and that you have to make very tough decisions, but I also want to remind the board that a significant amount of people on the bottled water list now are renters, low-income renters that, you know, do not have access to either running water or safe sources of water. Unfortunately, we are in, you know, a county that has significant water quality and water supply challenges that we've been trying to tackle for many years, but it's going to take time to get people safe sources of water. And in some cases, we probably won't ever be able to do that unfortunately unless we use something like point-of-use devices or another replacement source of water. So I really understand the situation that you're in, but I really would encourage this board to direct staff to work on coming up with alternative solutions for renters. I think the board learned that not providing service will not address the need. I mean, I think we learned that through the interim household water tank program, which was at the beginning, sort of at the, based on the guidelines from the state then. We, the county was forced to limit that program to owner-occupied homes only, but then we learned that people were, you know, still staying in the homes and out of water and so a lot of us lobbied the state to make changes to those guidelines so the county could provide household water tanks to those homes as well. And so now it seems like we're going back to kind of where we started. So again, just really encourage you to look at ways to partner with others or look at ways to make sure that at least the most vulnerable people are able to get water. I just, I just, you know, from years of working in these communities, I know that it's very hard to tell a family that's renting that, you know, there's no access for you. Thank you.
Sure. If I might just kind of respond to that. I think we're looking at it in the future, so when we, if and we do get another allocation, we can revisit this issue and there may be a case-by-case basis. I think most of us are thinking, if you've got a landlord, he's collecting rent from people and, you know, in many cases, I realize there are some instances where people have relinquished and not charged people because of the fact they don't, aren't able to provide them with water. But in most cases, it's a for-profit situation. They've had, initially there was a real problem of getting well drillers in to even be able to drill a well and that, I think, has passed. There's time to collect money and save money for purposes of drilling a well, but there may be instances where, you know, it may be something that it's, you know, my brother owns a place and my sister lives there or something like that. There may be situations where there's, there may be things we want to look at. But I think from the standpoint of looking at the for-profit landlord situation, it's time for them to step up. These wells were not drilled by the government beforehand, they were drilled by private, private enterprise. They need to step up and do the right thing as landlords. And sadly, it sometimes affects tenants, but again, it's inappropriate for us to continue, you know, to make improvements to the landlord situation, because that's what we're doing, especially when we're talking about putting in systems and so forth and connection, we're improving private property to benefit the tenant. But it also is a major benefit to the for-profit landlord. And so we've got to somehow draw a distinction there and I think this is an appropriate way to go forward. Again, as I say, when we get to the point, if and if we do get another allocation, it'll be time to look at the numbers. I tell you, I look at the numbers, there aren't that many wells that are no longer, you know, we've really reduced the number of non-performing wells. And so there's also another subset of that that are actually landlord tenants. So I think it's something we can look at more closely as we move down to that point and hopefully this will, you know, this notice and so forth will have a desired effect of having landlords step up in an interim period of time and start taking care of the of the problem. But I'm, I'm open to looking at this again in the, in the future, but I think it's appropriate to take the steps that we're talking about taking today.
And again, we are still applying for another allocation from the state and we can't forget that so that we can continue what we are doing. But this is just an in-case effort that we are not granted that additional funding. We do have to find some sort of a end to a temporary program or the county's going to be bearing the cost and we don't have the money to do that.
I have a question for myself for educational purposes. Do we lean properties when we've made improvements or is that something that we can do if, if improvements are made?
These programs have not involved leans, they've all been grant-funded.
So no county money has improved any systems?
There has been county money, but it's, it's been our matching funds, our administrative costs and so forth. We, the county's put out money for this, for these programs, but there's been no effort to recover any of that money.
Okay. Is that a possibility for the future to work to recover money that we have put out for private property owners?
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. It's not, that kind of contribution by the county is not eligible for reimbursement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All righty, any additional questions, comments? All right, the chair will entertain direction.
Move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're now going to move on to item number 31, which is a request from the probation department to accept the California Office of Traffic Safety grant funding in an amount not to exceed $168,301. And if it goes to 302, you got to go to Worthley to get that extra dollar.
He's always been very kind.
I know he is.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Spada and Ms. Peterson. My name is Christy Meyer and I am the chief probation officer for the county of Tulare. We have been involved with, in a partnership with the Office of Traffic Safety since 2009. And since that time, we have monitored felony drunk drivers who managed to find themselves on formal probation with great success. This past year, we had the opportunity to apply for an additional position to enhance our new driving under the influence court in partnership with the Superior Court. Our DUI court is an intensive treatment program for up to 36 months. It involves ongoing, continuous ankle monitoring for both movement and alcohol abuse. Our, to date, the court project has been quite successful. Only one individual has been arrested thus far on a new felony offense. And that's, that number is out of 22 people who have graduated and a number sixty, another 61 individuals who are currently involved in the program. We would like to continue our efforts and particularly, we're particularly interested in outcomes for the DUI court participants. Should it be successful and funding would not be forthcoming through the Office of Traffic Safety, we would have the ability to fund that internally through SB 678 funds and/or AB 109 funds which we receive from the state of California.
Right. Any questions or comments?
My, my only question was funding in the future.
I've told Mr. Spada, I don't ask for things that I can't sustain one way or the other.
Well, it seems like it's working if you've only had one person.
Yes.
In, so looks like a good program to make.
And keeps the rest of the public safe. Anybody from the public wanting to speak on the side? Seeing none, the chair will entertain direction.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck. All right, next we're going to move on to item number 32, which is a request from the General Services Department to receive and approve a report regarding the proposed general services and capital projects reorganization plan.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson. My presentation up. John Hess, Deputy CIO, General Services, Capital Projects. So the presentation this morning will be brief regarding a proposed organizational plan, including overview and background, current structure, the proposed structure that I'm requesting to make modifications for, and then conclude with requested action. So General Services and Capital Projects is responsible for providing internal services to county departments. So we serve departments who then in turn serve the public. This includes physical asset maintenance, cleaning and construction, real property, fleet management and parks and grounds, as well as print and mail. The department includes 155 full-time employees throughout nine divisions. And our budget this year is $100 million, a large amount of which is for construction projects for this fiscal year. So a little bit of history, General Services was reorganized into the CIO office in 2010 out of RMA and Capital Projects has been in the CIO's office for many years, except for one year there was, it was made standalone and then quickly brought back into the CIO's office. Since that time in 2014, both entities have been managed jointly as a single structure within the CIO's office with sharing single support services and so forth. Specifically, the divisions in the department are Capital Projects, Facilities, Property, Fleet Services, Print and Mail, Custodial, Parks and Recreation, which also includes County Grounds and County Museums, Fiscal Services and Analyst Services as well. So this is the present structure. As you can see, it's relatively flat, just a normal hierarchy of nine divisions that answer directly to myself, the Deputy CIO, as individual divisions. So our proposal is to kind of streamline and integrate those more functionally and there's some illustrations for that later on. So the limited reorganization plan would achieve a couple of different things. First is it would organize the department in a manner that best reflects the functions being provided. It would align the department's activities with the goals and objectives of the board and the county administrative officer. So for, some examples therein would be property disposition strategy, something that I'll touch on shortly here, that we would like to bring back to the board this year, as well as a Parks and Recreation strategic plan. Also would like to bring that back to the board shortly, actually. In addition, this would improve and maximize the project delivery throughout all the functional areas of the department and it would develop a departmental leadership team to generate a cross-functional management model within the department. So specifically, the proposal has essentially two major requests. First is to request the allocation of a general services manager position and then to create five departmental branches, individual functions kind of integrated together. First is general services. Second is capital projects and facilities. Three is parks and grounds. Four is analyst services and five is fiscal services. To date, essentially four of those five exist in the way that I would propose right now. The major change happens to be with item number one. So drilling down a little bit further, with respect to the proposed general services manager position, that position would be responsible for the following specific divisions. Property management, fleet services, custodial services and print and mail. So this graphic shows kind of the illustrated interrelationship of the five functional branches and how they would serve together for one unified departmental goal. The two green boxes there are the support services, sort of the administrative, fiscal, analyst, all the, all the services that help support the, the rest of the department to get their job done, which are the blue squares there in Parks and Grounds, General Services and Capital Projects and Facilities. As mentioned, Parks and Grounds and Capital Facilities are in place as shown here right now. The primary change has to do with that top box, which would integrate those services and create sort of a departmental leadership team shown on this slide. So briefly, just to, before I ask for the specific request, one example that I'd like to pull from all of that, because there's a lot of, you know, administrative things that could be discussed there, but one example that I'd really like to touch on is the responsibilities of the general services manager with respect to property management. Real estate services are a critical part of what we do and that's going to be probably the number one priority of this new position for a couple of years to come. And so property management is divided into three major areas, three broad areas. First of all, it's real estate. Second is lease management and then third is right-of-way. So with respect to real estate, that's the acquiring, selling, developing of county properties for county purposes. So a couple of things that we have on the agenda that we'd like to work on that we will be returning back to you with further direction and proposals are, first is to review the county's portfolio of properties to maximize their strategic use, that county disposition plan I mentioned earlier. The county owns a variety of properties and buildings and we occupy many of them, but there are some that are not occupied or whose occupation could be maximized for greater use for the county's purpose. And so we'd like to return with a proposal along those lines later this year. Second is to enhance the county's property acquisition process to accommodate special circumstances. The county buys perhaps five to 10 properties a year, some more or less in different years. And not every property is the same and so the process utilized to purchase those properties should not be the same. So accordingly, we'd like to look at a special circumstance process of acquiring property and return back to the board for that as well. Lease management, management of our county-operated leases and county tenant leases. We both rent from landlords and we as well rent to private tenants. So we'd like to streamline that process and ultimately, as we know with the acquisition of the Tulare Acres Center, the Cigna building, we have a very good position to continue to generate rental incomes for years to come. So we'd like to streamline all of that in the future. And then finally, another major component of what property does is right-of-way, major support to Resource Management Agency with respect to their expansion of infrastructure for commercial and economic purposes. So we'd like to as well streamline and look at a right-of-way manual, make sure this is up to date and serving the needs of RMA as much as possible. So that concludes the overall presentation. Our intent is for this proposal to improve the department's organizational structure, formalize it and put it in place, improve the services and processes provided to internal county departments and of course reflect the board and the CIO's strategic model for establishing cross-functional teams throughout departments. So of course I'd like to acknowledge the board and the CIO for their support of the department over the years, as well as, and most importantly, also would like to recognize staff throughout the department to, you know, with their hard work has made all of this happen. So many of them work behind the scenes in custodial and fleet and facility capacities and their work is, is very much appreciated. So the specific requested actions are to receive this report, approve a personnel resolution to add the position effective March 5th, as well as to approve a job specification amendments to the position on the books. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, if I might. I, I wanted to commend John. We've come a long way and, you know, having been here for much of it, there were lots of issues some time ago and, and I just see this as just been moving in the right direction and continuing to do so. Appreciate this effort to further fine-tune the process and you're to be commended, your staff, the people work for you because we, again, it's, it's great. I can remember when we first set up the, the funds for capital projects, we couldn't even figure out how to spend them to replace carpet. You know, it was just amazing. We were accumulating money because we couldn't replace carpets. It was just, it took someone stepping up and, you know, really doing the job and focused on it and we've, and we're doing that. And I, and it's, the evidence is just around us all the time. We look at the improvements we've made, we no longer have to worry about having plastic sheeting to protect our workers and their, and their supplies and the government plaza building, just things like that. So we've come a long ways, there's a lot more to go. We have a lot of properties and as you say, the evaluation of what to do with those in the future. I'm sure Amy's going to say something about the downtown courthouse. Maybe not. But anyway, I just want to commend you and am very supportive of what you're doing here today and thanks to all the staff and the hard work that they do.
Mike, are you trying to draw some love over in Porterville or what?
Yeah, no. I just want to commend John, great report and all of your staff. And I think this is just another way that the county is getting better organized for the future and being more efficient and I really like that. Thank you.
And that's what I was going to say, more efficiency and accountability is always a good thing. So appreciate the effort and support it.
Mr. Crocker?
I have a question. When you mentioned towards the end maximizing county buildings, how do you see that process looking at, what's that?
That's a good question. So we're very early in the stages of just putting together what that process would look like, gathering the information with respect to what properties are occupied by whom and what properties are vacant. So ultimately, it's a deliberative process that we would like to take, you know, with the board's support and direction over the time, over the next six to nine months to really drill down to each building and identify, is there a possibility for us to find a better use for that? Particularly some buildings that have been unused for, for some time.
Okay. And Mr. Spada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, I want to commend you, John, for your leadership, particularly with respect to strategically managing your, your department. Your service has been outstanding. What I'd like to highlight for the board and, and for the public is this, one of the proposed divisions in the organizational plan that is submitted to you is analyst services. This is truly innovative. At the business schools today, they are teaching and emphasizing project management and they are predicting that organizations of the future in the 21st century are going to have departments or divisions of project management. That's what this division is all about. This is an experiment in going forward and the property evaluation disposition plan, as well as the park strategic plan will be precise examples where this experiment will be brought to bear. So what we want to say to this board is that through John's leadership, we are moving ahead like no other organization with respect to trying to deliver service and performance to your board as well as to the public in Tulare County. So well done.
I always enjoyed science experiments in high school, so I think that these experiments are very, very well worthwhile undertaking. I really do appreciate this. I think this is a great concept. It's great to try new things and it ultimately aligns with this board's goal of running the county like a business and looking into new ways that we can do things to maximize our efficiency and to think outside the box and be less governmental and be more business-like, I think is always a great thing. So I'm certainly very supportive and look forward to the, the fruits of all of the labor that you and your staff have put into this. And also too, want to reiterate your comments about your great staff because you have a lot of very dedicated people in their respective divisions that do great work. So thank you.
The only other thing I would say, if next time you could make the print just a bit smaller, that would be a little more challenging. I like a challenge.
All right. Any public, any public comments related to this? Okay, seeing none, chair will entertain a motion. I have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Good job, John. Congratulations. Next, we're going to move on to item number 33, which is a request from the Board of Supervisors staff to receive input and provide direction regarding the 2017, 2018 state legislative platform.
You might want to lower that.
Yeah, I was looking at a, I see the top of your head. So I'm a little bit shorter than the person before me, but that's okay. Good morning, Board, County Council, CIO, Ms. Chief Clerk. This morning, we are going to go through the state legislative platform. Of course, this is a working document, it is a draft. Everything contained in this PowerPoint was submitted as an exhibit, so we will quickly go through it. Unless you really want me to read word for word, I can do that for you as well. And so I have Ms. Denise England here with me as she has been working on this document with myself as well as other departments. And so the first slide we have up here is the Dairy Digestor Program. That is actually an ongoing topic we've had on the platform. We've kept it here because we're still trying to find initiatives to support these type of projects. So not a major shift, just something we want to continue to keep out there. Forest management, like Supervisor Worthley has mentioned, active forest management. A little bit ago, you received a presentation from Mr. Eric Coyne in regards to the tree mortality epidemic and like we've been seeing, we're getting water now, but that hasn't really resolved any of the issues we're having in our forests, our private properties. So what we're trying to emphasize is that although people seem to think the drought has passed, we still have a serious situation up in our forests. We are still in need of funding. County is still spending a lot of their time and resources trying to figure out what to do up there. And so this is very much still on our radar. As you know, August or September of this year, staff was working with RMA to make some comments to the Ennio Secoia Sierra Forest Plan Revisions. A big thank you to Hector Gero because at that time, he wasn't, he was one of the people most active in working with the board to get these comments made. And so although this year was brought to our attention in 2016 that the Forest Service was revising these plans, they really weren't addressing what was going on with tree mortality. We were really looking at stats from maybe four years ago. We weren't getting these numbers that we have now with the millions of dead trees and so we felt as a county, it wasn't a great reflection as to what was happening. So active forest management is just something we continue to look at. And please, you know, we will go through this at the end, but if there's anything that pops into your head, you have any questions as we're going along? Wave me down.
Mr. Chairman, on that matter, I was thinking, we, we may just want to add a line because you indicated where forest, active forest management is really the long-term goal. And I think we might want to just say, you know, support legislation to address active management on national forests, something of that nature. Because that really, you know, dead trees, they're dead. If we don't get them out in a certain period of time, they're either going to fall or, but they, they lose their merchantability. But the real question going forward is how are we going to manage these forests going forward? And so I think that we almost have to some point start refocusing our attention on that issue. So I just think it may be a line to that would be appropriate.
Will do. And as you can tell, there was one crossed. And as you can tell, there was one crossed out for the record. We're removing that from the exhibit. It's a separate component. Sequel reform, we'll take these together. These as well have been ongoing issues. As you know, Mr. Paul Yoder came to us in January, and the question was posed, what's going on with sequa? He did let us know that although there's no specific legislation targeting the process as a whole, sequa has been looked at piece by piece. As he mentioned, there might be a little bit of sequel reform in transportation, but so far what we've seen come through is a project-by-project basis. So our goal in the future, we would continue to fight for sequa and just streamlining that process to make it a little easier, maybe minimize the roadblocks that sometimes
Good morning, Board, Denise England. I will be handling the water components on the state legislative platform. So the first one is related to private well assistance. We've made some progress in this area. This has been an ongoing issue. SB 88 allows for consolidation of failing small water systems with nearby municipal systems, but it did not include anything for communities on private domestic wells. And so we're looking for some potential legislative solution there, and also continuing some support of those that have private domestic wells that are not candidates for any sort of consolidation because they're so remote. And again, just as Julieta mentioned, if you have any questions as we go through these, feel free to stop me. And Supervisor Chucklin, you asked for smaller print, and we have delivered.
No, this is good. I like this print.
So, next slide, please. The next one is creating sustainable operation and maintenance revenue streams. This has been an ongoing issue with Prop 218, so potentially Prop 218 reform. There's also conversations going on at the state regarding a lifeline utility rate for water, similar to those that are offered for other utilities such as phone, electricity, and natural gas. Next slide, please. This is addressing the funding process. Again, a lot of work has been done. We've made a lot of progress, but there's still some roadblocks in getting funding out to those communities that need it most. One good example is our community of Seville that has been in receivership for nine years that we've been working on trying to get funding, and we just recently received that first $5 million for Phase 1 of that project. I think we would all agree that that's still too long and that there's some streamlining that can occur there. The next slide, and it'll actually be two slides. This is an ongoing issue that's been on the platform for several years. The county is required to provide, to approve farm labor housing. However, there's not a checkbox that housing goes in where a safe, reliable source of drinking water exists. And so you have these two conflicting regulations, and so we're continuing the problem of not having safe drinking water because we have to approve these, the housing without checking that box. And so that needs to be resolved at the state level. Next slide. This one, I get a call almost every other week about this one. This is in regard to allowing funding for drinking water programs to also provide fire flow. So under existing rules and regulations, piping size and capacity and hydrants are not eligible under drinking water funding sources because those, it's the opinion of the state agencies that those are solely for drinking water. And so when you have severely disadvantaged communities like Oakville that are getting 100% grant funding, they're not, those grant funds are not eligible to be spent on fire flow. So it's typically an upsize in pipe, it's typically hydrants. Avenue 322 had 25 connections, and I think that additional cost was only about $17,000 for a quarter of a million dollar project. And so having $17,000 standing in the way of a sustainable water solution for a severely disadvantaged community is problematic, and so we ask that the state board amend their rules to allow this to be eligible. Next slide. The final one is a, or I'm sorry, there's a few more. This one, I'll have a full presentation under item 30, but the, there is Prop 1 funding available for our funding region to provide a program for integrated regional water management and disadvantaged community involvement. Our funding region is eligible for $3.4 million, and so this is just asking that our delegates support Tulare County's proposal to go after that one. And as I said, item 30, or I'm sorry, item 36 on your agenda today will be a full report on that. The next is water supply south of the delta. This has been an ongoing request over the last couple of years to request the state water board to operate the delta pumps within the maximum flexibility under the environmental opinions. There's been some work on the federal side with HR 23 that's gone through the House, it's working its way through the Senate now, and we would ask that the state Water Resources Control Board continue or begin to operate their duties as most flexible as possible to get as much water as possible through the delta. And then the last one is our ongoing effort for Proposition 1, surface water storage, particularly temperance flat. And that concludes the water components, if there's any comments, questions.
Supervisor Worthley, on the solution side, just a suggestion, it's wording, but I would like us to put temperance flat in front of sites reservoir and then put and rather than or. So right now, it says, projects such as sites reservoir or temperance flat, put temperance flat and sites reservoir in the conjunctive.
Oh yeah, our emphasis should be temperance flat.
Should be temperance flat, and it shouldn't be one or the other. We really think both.
Yeah, any advocacy for storage is worthwhile in this state.
Well, hello again. So Williamson Act is another ongoing issue we've had. There's actually been new legislation introduced, however, it is too soon to tell how far this will go. But ultimately, the goal would be to provide a portion of these cancellation fees back to local jurisdiction. I know this board has always made that comment that, you know, we have this land, we're not getting any funding back for it, and so we would like to see that come back to us. A lot of the legislation right now, it is targeting the repeal of this prohibition that was taking away funding to us. Again, it's something we're going to watch, but it was just recently introduced, and so we'll keep an eye out for that.
On that point, Mr. Chairman, I would like for us, it says now a portion, and I think, you know, from a negotiating standpoint, we should say that all cancellation fees return to the local jurisdiction. You say portion, and they would say, that'd be like the state saying, well, you know, we actually are funding Williamson Act. We put $1,000 every year in that program, so that's their portion, you know, where we were getting three and a half million. So I don't, I don't want to, yeah, just strike a portion and actually put all cancellation fees returned to the county.
But we will make that change. State payment in lieu of taxes, this is actually, in addition to the exhibit, we've made it its own component. This is also now an ongoing effort. We usually get the initial outreach from our rural county representatives of California, which this board is a member of, and so they are the biggest advocates, along with CSAC, along with a lot of the counties, trying to ensure that we are going to get these payments for future years to come. Last year, we had the same scenario where some language was changed, shall to me. So the concern is that even though this administration has said they will continue to provide pilt, it's not guaranteed, nor are we getting a guarantee that this is to come back in the future. So state pilt is something at the federal and state level that we're ultimately always advocating for.
Mr. Chairman, on this one, I think, because ongoing funding might sound like we're going to be there every year, as we are right now requesting it, maybe we should say support legislation for continuous appropriation. The idea being that it's automatic. It shouldn't be something you have to fight for every year. It should be something which is automatically paid for. You know, the state budget should just automatically assume it's going to pay that. And for those who are wondering what we're talking about here, when the state acquires property from, out of private enterprise and puts it in the state, whether it's parks or refuges or whatever, they obviously take that land out of taxpayer status, and they don't pay taxes unless they're obligated to, and that's what we're saying, is we need to continue to receive those property taxes.
Government finance and operations, civil finance penalties, again, this is something we actually kept on the platform from last year. Not much has changed. It's us trying to recuperate some costs. So again, we're just saying some code enforcement fees. We'd like to be able to add a final penalty. It hasn't really occurred, but doesn't mean we're going to quit advocating for that. County governance authority, this actually came through us from the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, if I didn't say that earlier. Just a lot of attention has been drawn recently to local authority, the size of the board, the jurisdiction a board may have, the CIO, should he be elected, should he be appointed? CSAC ultimately is just advocating for us to keep our local control. There is a lot, we, the board is elected by the public. I mean, we do have the responsibility, but we also want then to have trust in these boards, that they do elect, that they are making the best decisions for the county. And so CSAC has just been working with counties to say, hey, you know, let us keep local authority and control here.
But I might just comment on this, Mr. Chairman, the, this really was aimed at the large counties. Los Angeles County Supervisor in Los Angeles County represents two and a half million people. They represent, I think, the equivalent of four or five congressmen. So the idea was there maybe to increase those from five to seven, and then they also talked about having the CIO be an independently elected official. I think the concern we always have to have is sometimes they start off that way, and then when it's all done, everybody's going to end up with seven supervisors and elected CIO, and it doesn't make a lot of sense in our smaller counties. So I think it's important for us to stay engaged in this process.
The next issue is the elimination of the Maintenance of Effort, MOE, for the in-home support services. This has been the hot topic issue, and thank you to H. Jusay, who has actually been working with us. Thank you to Jason Brett and Juliet Webb, who have really been extremely responsive and educating staff so we can understand how this is going to affect our counties. Ultimately, we're looking at a $2 or $3 million hit to the general fund, and that's not looking out further into the future. The Legislative Analyst Office actually just released a report this week, and they're basically saying that the CCI component doesn't generate general fund savings. They propose the continuance of some of the components of the CCI, however, they do think that the MOE will provide some general fund relief for the state, acknowledging that there will be a shift of cost to the counties. So they are acknowledging that this could place a burden on the counties, however, there isn't an offer to the solution of how to, you know, provide some relief. There's talk about maybe a one-time grant for counties to help with the initial year, but there's no further discussion after that of how the counties can proceed. So ultimately, we're looking at these shifts coming from the state to the counties, and not only how we will deal with the initial year, but years to come if this, if there's no reverse decision.
I might just give a little bit of historical perspective here, Mr. Chairman. IHSS was started off totally as a state program. It was not, the county was not engaged in it at all. This is a bait-and-switch approach by the state, which they've done so effectively in the past, where they said, oh, well, we're going to shift this down to this counties. We want you, these people to be employed by the county, and by the way, we will provide this funding to help offset these costs to you. Now, built into the MOU was the ability for them to make a decision that, well, this isn't working, so we can pull out. Oh, thank you very much. And then in addition to that, they raised the minimum wage target, which, you know, without regard for what that means, so in the next three to four years, we're going to $15 an hour. So this is a huge problem of why there's so much, a lack of confidence in the state of California on financial matters, because whenever they have any kind of, they have no problems at all with pulling out and leaving counties holding the back, and this is a prime example of that. So it was a major topic at CSAC, at our Board of Directors meeting and the Executive Board meeting, and fortunately, we have a lot of allies in this fight because obviously, the big counties, it's even a bigger hit, and I don't just mean because they're bigger, but I mean by the proportional share, it's bigger for San Diego, Los Angeles, the large urbanized counties because of a different kind of programs they had. But I didn't realize how it actually affected us as well, and it's serious. Like you said, $2, $3 million now, and it's only going to get larger as the minimum wage laws increase over the next several years. So it's a big problem.
Anybody else want to add historical perspective? No, but just since we're on this point, is that, is that dollar amount, is that accurate? Because I was, I thought we had a higher dollar amount that we were looking at.
We're at an estimate right now. I don't think we have accurate numbers. I'm looking at Jason.
So if we have higher numbers, I would suggest we utilize higher numbers.
Right now, we have, we're still finishing all the analysis, but in the first year, we're looking at between $2 and $3 million, but then the out-years get much, much grimmer, depending on what happens.
Yeah.
The way CSAC approached it was, they were using six years. They were saying it's going to cost counties over the next six years, $6 billion. The Governor's Office response to that was, well, why are you talking about six years? That's an arbitrary number. Why are you thinking, what does it mean for you next year? I mean, but honestly, I think given the fact, especially looking at the minimum wage increases, which are built right in, it's appropriate to look at a longer timeframe, because it's bad now, and it's going to get worse, and it's not, it's not a question of if it's going to get worse, it is going to get worse, period.
And I believe the associations, including our own county, were engaged in a five-year analysis, but there are still some very, very moving variables around that five-year analysis. So in order to not create panic, we, I only gave the first year, but we will be sharing those numbers. We have worked with Sophia in the CIO's office and with Julieta and everyone to share those numbers, but it was just important to at least focus on, a lot of the counties are focusing on their first-year impacts because of the immediate costs that it will likely become as we look for budget, because many counties are engaged in their budget process right now, so they're having to come up with numbers for budgeting. And the real key here, if I could just add, not to take away from Julieta, but is to ensure the state continues increasing their participation to the wage as their own minimum wage law increases.
That was passionate, Jason. Thank you.
We always appreciate, Jason. County Veteran Services Officers, again, this is another ongoing topic that we would always continue, we always welcome getting some more funding for that. One of our state representatives, Devin Nunes, has lobbied for this as well, so it's something we always keep up to date with him. Devin Mathis, I'm sorry. I think I said Devin Nunes, I meant Devin Mathis. Medi-Cal and Medicare reimbursement rates, again, it's something we are always looking for. The last time we checked, at the end of 2016, we had about 55% of Tulare County's population receiving coverage via Medi-Cal. Right now, we are looking at the Affordable Care Act repeal. We haven't brought it forward yet. I think it's something we'll work on when it comes to the federal platform, as, you know, the new administration is going through this. We are going to analyze how that will affect Tulare County. In the meantime, we will still seek reimbursement for our Medi-Cal and Medicare members. Alcohol and drug mental health treatment, these numbers are actually, thank you to probation, the DA, the public defender, who look at this specifically because they are the ones that are dedicating the staff time. No Proposition 47 funding has been received by Tulare County to date. So there are some totals here we are using. There is work that is being done. We have received over 5,000 petitions. So the above cost total, $417,186. That was from 2014 to 2017. So these weren't considered during the drafting of this proposition. They don't include staff time by the public defender or DA personnel in the courtroom. So again, we want to sponsor legislation that's going to support any receipt of county funds or offer support for related impacts to mental health services and alcohol and drug treatment services. No Place Like Home Initiative, really, this has branched off, and there's many initiatives now, trying to address homelessness in the various counties and in the larger cities. Like we said previously, H. Jusay had brought forward a presentation. The county itself has created a task force, and so we are just going to keep monitoring different legislation that's coming through, funding that we can get to address this issue in Tulare County. We're no stranger to homeless people near and around our county buildings, and so when Mr. Yoder also came in January, as you know, he mentioned there is some funding, legislation for funding that's being put out there, separate into categories. It has been said that a lot of it is already being targeted to certain larger counties or cities. It doesn't mean that we can't fight for a share of that, but it's an ongoing topic. We will be looking as the year continues and probably a couple of years to come if it remains primary on a lot of people's agendas. And transportation, as you know, last year, the legislature and the governor couldn't reach a deal, so there was no transportation package. They picked it up again at this legislative session. It is something, I guess we could say we're a little bit, we're battling. The governor has proposed a package. There is legislation out there from both the Assembly and the Senate, trying to make sure that we get a little bit more funding to the counties for local streets repairs, local for local streets repairs, local projects. We just wanna make sure we're considered. We have a lot of traffic trucks and a lot of damage to our roads, and so we welcome a fair share of that funding. This has been an ongoing issue that we have talked to RMA about, you know, they are the ones that have that knowledge on our roads. But all we know is that we do need the funding. This is a heavily trafficked area. We have a lot of businesses out here throughout the county. They're heavily trafficked, traveled roads. And so we will support any legislation that's gonna help maintain and improve our local streets and roads and state highways.
If I might comment, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I think that, do you, do you wanna finish the rest of the transportation from the next page?
That would be.
Is your comment specifically related to that page? Because I know that she addresses in addition.
It's about transportation in general.
If she, if she finishes the next page, that'll finish the transportation stuff.
I think she's done.
Yes, yes, so.
Oh, did she? I'm sorry. I thought there was the second page.
She's expedited.
Go ahead.
Well, just real quickly, Senator Beal's bill was, was the bill that would have provided funding. And we, you can argue with parts of it, you know, it was a combination of increasing the excise tax, increasing registration, and on and on. But the, the, our concern about the governor's proposal is that in Senator's Beal's legislation, it was basically a 50/50 split between the state of California and local governments. The, the governor's one is, is more like two-thirds, one-third to the state. So that's our concern. I mean, governor, we understand the governor, he often tries to pick a middle-of-the-road type of a number and bring these costs down to something that's more manageable. But he's doing it, in this case, surprisingly, on the backs of local government. So that's, that's a concern that we, that we have. The weight fees that, you know, our big impacts are roads, are trucks. Trucks pay impact, they pay weight fees. The weight fees go to state of California. They don't use them anymore, as they used to use them for state highways for repairing maintenance on roads. Instead, they goes to pay the bonds. And so we don't, and that, that's all the more reason for us to say we need to have a larger share of these, of this tax revenue for local government, because we're not getting any weight fees. We never have gotten weight fees. We probably aren't gonna get them in the future, but that is the real impact for our roads.
And, and, you know, I, I do think it's important to maintain advocacy when they talk about the, the vehicle miles traveled fee, regardless of what piece it is in any transportation fix. That disproportionately affects and impacts the residents in the rural areas of California. And I do think that we can almost piggyback on what T CAG is doing on behalf of Measure R advocacy, because we do such a great job of leveraging our local measure to bring in state dollars to get projects done. We have a, a real potential to lose projects that we have gained because of our efficiencies in Tulare County through T CAG and Measure R. So I wanna make sure that they are very much aware of that.
So before you is a list of suggested priorities. This is just a suggestion. You are welcome to add, delete, amend. So of course, I H S S and the M O E repeal, forest management, transportation, water supply, surface water storage, and if there's any other topic that you just feel we need to add on there. Again, the whole document is the guide for the next two years in this legislative session. You can come forward at any time, make amendments as we see the changes going through our state legislature. Right now, it's just to give us an idea of the topics we wanna pursue for this year, maybe next year. But again, it's a working document. We can always come back and revise. Right now, we're just thinking, in this moment, what does this county wanna advocate and lobby when we go to Sacramento this next month? Doesn't make the other topics any less meaningful.
Anybody have any suggestions? Supervisor Crocker?
I have several. You know, back at the, at the agricultural section, the first section, I think that in addition, it's important to include some type of funding for Asian citrus salad research and Wong Wong Bing from the state level. We've received dollars for that type from Washington, but I think this, the state really has, and, and we as Tulare County, being the largest citrus county in the, in the state, that has a, that has a potential of a huge impact on our local economy if, if we see the, the losses of, of production that others areas are seeing, like in Texas and in Florida, where 60% of their acreage has had to be pulled. So I think that's important for us. And I, I'm sure our counterparts at C C M would be happy to provide additional information regarding that. And then, as far as the forest management, I think, including as part of the solution, biomass facilities, advocating for the state to encourage the use of biomass to, to take out some of the dead organic materials in the forest. I think that's very positive, not only from, from that standpoint, but just from an energy standpoint as well. The, on item seven of drinking water, from the, there was a, a, a point about getting a fair share of funding from bonds. And I just wanna encourage us that, that we're not discouraging funding for surface water projects for disadvantaged communities. It's not an either/or, that, but that if that's specific for drinking water, then, then that's great. But I, I just wanted to provide that.
In Proposition 1, there was different buckets. And so there was a disadvantaged community bucket, and then there was a storage bucket. There is some overlap in that you could advocate for a surface water project if it benefited disadvantaged communities, say groundwater recharge or something of that nature. So there's a little bit of overlap, but it's not really an either/or.
The application that we're in the process of preparing, and that's exactly what it will do, is a comprehensive plan. The idea is we need to have the storage in order to be able to do these projects, which will include recharge projects and help disadvantaged communities with their water supply.
And then, lastly, just in relation to transportation, and I don't know that this will be resolved today, but I, but perhaps for a future agenda item, I think that we as a board should look at having specific responses to the bills that are proposed. So A B one, Frazier's bills, S B one, Beal's, and then, I don't know the, the number for Assemblyman Fong's bill that he just introduced. But I, I think we should have, if we talk about transportation, I mean, those are the hot topics. And from my understanding and seeing from R C R C and from CSAC, they're very concerned that we may not get a transportation. What was, the momentum that was happening two months ago is now stalling rapidly. And so I'm, you know, concerned about that. And so what that looks like as far as our specific position on, on transportation, I think that would be helpful.
And you know, that is a topic we have discussed with our chairman, and it is something that we have talked about with our state lobbyists. And since they just released new legislation also pertaining to transportation, we are gonna work with Mr. Yoder to look over what all that entails, and certainly bring something to this board as a separate agenda item, to either provide comments or a support letter on behalf of the board, along with CSAC, R C R C for the transportation package. So that is something we are taking into consideration and will bring forward for you all on a separate date.
And, and just to respond to what Supervisor Crocker said, you know, I, I think that responding to the bills is important. And, and we can do that on the advocacy trip, but typically, we just wanna advocate for what is most important here in the county. And we do send position letters related to specific bills. Maybe as they're a little bit further along in the legislative session, or when we are prompted to do so by either CSAC or R C R C. And that's where we can give very specific criticism or support for a specific bill in the process.
Well, ju- just to that point, I know CSAC at Supervisor Worthley had the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District meeting. And so I attended the last CSAC board meeting. And, and the message was very clear that CSAC wanted support letters for S B one and A B one.
Specifically.
But I don't know whether or not this board is willing to take that type of position. And so that's why I suggested that we have further discussion over that. But, because there are issues, I think that some of us may see with, with those two bills in particular, but also some merits to them as well.
And, and maybe we can bring those back at a, at a future board meeting, just for some specific criticism or support related to each bill that we can basically line out in a letter that we can send up to them.
So what we can do as staff is work on either proposed letters or comments, bring them to your board. At that point, we will let you decide how you would like to proceed. And then, as always, whenever we take a position on any type of bill, I know that sometimes it can die down. And so we can always come back later on in the session to reiterate our position or reiterate the support wherever it's moving along. And so just because we introduce a letter of position, we can just maintain it and just make sure to reiterate with our legislators that we are still, you know, supporting or advocating for a specific topic. With that, before I move further, Supervisor Crocker, just to clarify, A C P, did you want that added as a component to the platform or also as a priority issue when we go on this advocacy trip?
I don't know that it, I, I would just add it to the platform at this point in time. I don't know that it needs to be. I think the priorities that were listed are, are very large, and I, I would want further discussion before seeing whether.
If I might talk about the priority issues. I, I think transportation should probably be number, I mean, just in terms of sequencing, number two, because I think that's really on a hot topic for us. Water supply should probably be number three. And then, it's, it's, I think that, that we've kinda talked about, is water storage slash disadvantaged communities. You know, the idea here, we want to point out that there's, this is not just building a dam. This is also about recharge projects. It's about providing water for disadvantaged communities. On the active forest management, I think we, it wants, we need to have it there, but it's, it's a little different at the state level. What we really want the state, because most of our lands are federal lands. We're talking about forests, primarily for Tulare County, it's Sequoia National Forest. We have some B L M land, we have some national forest lands, or national park lands. What we want the state to do is become aggressive in putting pressure on the federal government to do what needs to be done in terms of active management. So it's not, there's very little actual state land. So I mean, in terms of, you know, saying we want active management on our forest lands, we're wanting the state to partner with us to pressure the National Forest Service, particularly the national, you know, the National Forest Land Managers, to become actively engaged in managing their, their assets. If that, if that helps to make that clear.
And then, before I continue, I want to apologize for the typo. That is not I H H, I H H S, I H S S. Jason, tell me.
Oh, well, you know what you're talking about.
So with that, just to clarify, these were in a particular order, but we do wanna put emphasis on I H S S, transportation, water supply, also emphasis on the recharge projects that would go along with surfer, surface water, water storage, forest management. And was there anything else as far as our advocacy trip that you felt needed to be added on that?
Any other ideas? Anything from Porterville, or are we pretty well covered?
I think Porterville's got their fair share of stuff, so.
I'd check on you down there. Mikey, make sure you're awake.
No, I would say, though, good presentation, Julieta and everything, covering everything.
Thank you. And so with that, since you already provided input and suggested changes to the platform, we just, we ask that you please approve the revisions that we have made to this platform, including the deletion of Sentence Three Forest Management, the addition of State Pill Component, the various information and changes you have provided, and approve the suggested list of county priorities for the annual advocacy trip with any amendments that were just made.
Okay.
We've given direction. Do you need a motion?
Do you wanna?
To approve the actual suggested list of priorities, I do require a motion from you.
I move approval of the suggested list with the changes.
Here, we have a motion from Supervisor Struckley, and a motion from, or in a second from Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that short presentation. We will now move on to take up item thirty-four, which is a request from the County Administrative Office to establish an ad hoc committee comprised of two members of the board to assist the county with the implementation of a county strategic financing plan. Sophia.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, C A O, County Council. I'm Sophia Almondza, Deputy C A O over Budget and Finance. Today, I'll be presenting the strategic financing plan on the ad hoc committee. So some background is the, in the chairman's address, county address, he requested a strategic financing plan. The strategic financing plan is an example of implementing Tulare County's strategic business plan. And the purpose is to provide a framework for addressing long-term expenditures facing the county during the next five years. So it's not going to be budget to budget. We're reaching out and looking at a five-year span. The proposed components of the strategic financing plan are potential reorganization of the county's financial service department, operational staffing and provision of health services for the criminal justice and public safety facility now under construction, construction of transportation improvements and infrastructure, addressing impacts to our rural communities, roads, bridges, water facilities, wastewater facilities, flood control facilities, and parks, public employee compensation, including health benefits, retirement and salary, structural balancing of key departmental budgets. So the requested action before you, before I read it, I would like to clarify and propose an amendment to add an alternate, Mr. Chairman. Instead of just having, appointing the supervisor and the two supervisor, we're proposing to add an alternate in addition. So the first request is to establish an ad hoc committee comprised of two members and one alternate from the Board of Supervisors to assist with the county with evaluating the implementation of the county's strategic financing plan. The second request is to appoint two members and one alternate from the Board of Supervisors to serve on the ad hoc strategic financing plan committee, namely whoever you mentioned, as each of the supervisors and the alternate, and provide direction to the County Administrative Office in addressing the key components of the strategic financing plan.
All right. So I'm pretty much gonna volunteer myself, because this was one of my ideas to begin with, and I figured that I would be thrown under the bus if I didn't do so. And then I know that this committee won't be doing much travel, so I'm not gonna throw Crocker on there. But I do know that Supervisor Worthley has a particular interest in one key component of the financing plan that that should address, and that is specifically related to retirement. And so anybody else have any particular interests? I think that Supervisor Worthley could be either the alternate or the second member, depending on the issue. And those two supervisors can work that out.
Well, yeah, if, if the board would indulge me, I, I would like to be put in the alternate position and have someone else as a primary position with you. And then I would like to be participating particularly in that particular, in that area of the retirement.
Despite my comments on, on other committees, I, I wouldn't mind, or I'd be happy to serve on this if no one else is interested, so.
Oh, wow, volunteering instead of having to draw the short straw.
Volunteer Mike there for it.
And don't take offense to my comment for a short straw, Tyler.
You know, he's new, and he's gonna be on here for a long haul, I feel. And I think it is a good position for him.
All right. So you have direction to create the ad hoc committee, and we will focus on the issues that have been outlined as being key financial issues for us to be addressing in the coming year. And you have the two primary members and an alternate.
Thank you very much.
And can I get a motion to basically?
I'd like to move that we appoint Chairman Vanderpool and Supervisor Crocker as the primary members, and Supervisor Worthley as the alternate member of the strategic financing ad hoc committee.
I'll second that.
The, the two that aren't involved, motion and second. Easy for you guys, huh? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we are now gonna move on to item number thirty-five, which is a request from the County Administrative Office to approve the penalty assessment fees for the courthouse construction be eliminated, et cetera, et cetera. Go ahead.
Hello again. This is me, Sophia Almondza, Deputy C A O. I'll be presenting the penalty assessment fees and the removal of the courthouse construction funds. Thank you. So as some background, under Board Resolution ninety-one dash thirteen-two-three, the board adopted the penalty assessments that authorize, authorized by government code that allocate the following: courthouse construction fund, dinuba courthouse construction fund, criminal justice facilities construction fund, and the automated fingerprint identification fund, for a total of seven dollars per ten-dollar fine. Under the same resolution, the board also adopted parking citation penalties, and they allocated as follows: two dollars and fifty cents for each of criminal justice facilities and the, and the courthouse construction fund. This will all connect at the end. As continued background, in 2001, the board reallocated the fifty-cent assessment for the automated fingerprint identification fund to the emergency medical services fund. And that was per government code. services fund, and that was per government code seven-six-one-oh-four-C. Under government code seven-six-zero-zero-E, the assessment of seven dollars per ten dollars is going to drop to five dollars per the ten dollars of fine, when the debt obligations for the county courthouse construction fund are fully satisfied. So by that government code, we're required to drop to five dollars. The courthouse construction fund, for the bond payments for the Visalia courthouse and the Dinuba courthouse have been paid as of August fifteen, twenty fifteen. So per that government code, as the bonds have been paid, the penalty assessments are no longer required. So, we're requesting the Board authorization to remove the two funds, which is the courthouse construction fund, which is the Visalia, and the Dinuba courthouse construction fund. The criminal justice facilities construction fund and the emergency medical services fund will remain intact. In addition, government code authorizes the amount, okay, in the county's courthouse construction fund established under government code seven-six-one-thousand shall be transferred to the state court construction fund at the date of the final payment of bonded indebtedness for any court facility that is paid for when the fund is retired. So if you recall, we actually paid it off in twenty fifteen, we've extended that time. Also, as of government code seven-six-one-one-zero, the Board of Supervisors by resolution may transfer the access of funds from the courthouse construction fund or the criminal justice facilities courthouse construction fund to the county general fund for the purpose, and solely for the purpose of meeting the public safety or emergency medical services need to the county, which is why we're keeping the two funds, the criminal justice fund and the emergency medical fund, provided the need for the construction courthouse, construction, and the criminal justice facilities has been met. So as long as those needs have been met, we're in line with the government code. So, based on all that wonderful government codeness, our fiscal opportunity right now is through the assistance with the county auditor's office, it appears that we have an increased share of funding that can remain with the county, even though the debt service was paid in twenty fifteen. So it's suggested that the CAO work with the county auditor and county council to determine the precise amount of funding to remain with the county and the remaining funds that would be submitted to the state. So the auditors are going to come in and do a reconciliation, which they've been super helpful with, as far as looking at all of the documentation to ensure the amount that is necessary for the county and the amount that is necessary, excuse me, to the state. So, before, I'm going to back up, is there any questions on that before I go on?
How much, how much is in the fund, do we know?
In the Dinuba courthouse fund, there's slightly over three million dollars, and the Visalia courthouse fund, it's roughly four hundred thousand. So it is a significant amount of money in there, and that's why the reconciliation and the research is needed from the county auditor's office, who's been extremely helpful, as well as county council. This, this information goes back from, as I had mentioned, nineteen ninety-one, so getting that documentation has been a significant obstacle, and the county auditors has been helpful with that. Did you have any further questions before I?
Yeah, go ahead Supervisor Crocker. Are these fees specific to those courthouses, or is this just courthouses in general for the county?
Those fees were dedicated specifically for those courthouses, and that's why as the debt service was paid off, then those, those fees need to be removed and then the funds be dissolved.
If we had need for additional facilities in the future, then that would take a whole another process.
That's where the criminal justice facility construction fund comes into play, which is still going to be intact, and the emergency medical services fund. So we will still take five dollars off of every ten dollar fee, four fifty going to that criminal justice facilities construction fund, and fifty cents going to that emergency fund.
Do you have a question?
Go ahead Supervisor Worthley.
Is, am I understanding that all courthouse construction obligations have been met at the current time?
Yes.
And so looking at government code seventy-six-hundred-E, the assessment will drop from seven to five, effective when?
The assessment will drop effective once this board approves it.
Okay. Even though the obligation was, was met earlier, we're going to be able to keep these dollars that were assessed?
That's where the reconciliation with the county auditors is going to come into play, because the reconciliation is going to determine, as you just stated, the, the debt service was paid August fifteen, twenty fifteen, and August twenty sixteen, we should have sent the money out, and that should have been done. As the money's still accumulated and we're being added to the fund, then it's the determination of the auditor's office to see the amount of, that is due to the county and the amount that needs to be remitted to the state.
But then, and then the other thing is, then, effective today on the action we take, it drops from seven to five?
Correct.
And then that additional money goes to the state automatically, I mean, we're receiving it now for purposes of the court construction. With that, with that being gone, we don't get a chance to reallocate those two dollars someplace else?
The criminal justice facilities construction fund, by resolution, we can repurpose those funds, that's allowed, and the emergency medical services funds, as long as we follow what's in the government code, because those are the two funds that are going to stay.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's as of what we've collected to date, right? My question really is going forward, are we going to see the reduction from seven to five?
Yes, you are. The, the, I've been working with the judicial courts and they have been, this requires by law the resolution from the Board to approve, so then therefore they can't change their allocation in their system for those dollars to be going to stop. So until this board.
Take action.
Yeah, until we take action here, they cannot stop that allocation. And in fact, we've been working with them since the fall to stop that allocation, but this requires system changes, which cost them dollars, so we've come to a point where now they have the resolution to the approval, hopefully, they'll have the approval to move forward, the motion to move forward, and then they're going to work with their, I forgot the name of their system, whoever's overseeing their system to reallocate the fees accordingly.
I guess my only comment is that the, in this case, our delay was to our benefit, it appears, because going forward, there won't be, those, those two dollars are not going to be coming to the county of Tulare, they're going to go to the state of California, is that right? Okay, that's all, thank you.
Well, I, I think the key to this is that the state now owns the courthouse, it's not the county. The one in Porterville was built with state funds, not county funds.
Well, that was, that already happened.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your assistance, the county administrative office, my staff for their assistance, County Council has been super helpful with this entire process, as well as the county auditor's office. They, again, were pulling research, that was ten, fifteen years old, for us to come to this point, and then also the judicial administration and their cooperation and assistance to provide me information as well. So with this request, Mr. Chairman, I am proposing a technical amendment to Exhibit One, request five-A, the Dinuba courthouse construction fund is, should be stated received after August fifteenth, and it states August twelfth. So that's my technical correction. So with that, the Board of Supervisors approve the resolution with the change as Exhibit One regarding the penalty assessment fees and removal of the courthouse construction funds, and thank you for your consideration in this request.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second from Supervisor Struckling, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Now we will move on to item number thirty-six, which is a request from the county administrative office to approve submitting a proposal for the Tulare Kern funding area to the California Department of Water Resources to obtain a grant in an amount not to exceed three-point-four million dollars in response to the Proposition One Integrated Regional, I was just going to keep reading until you got up there, but go ahead.
I apologize for not adding more words to that request.
Yeah, that's a long sentence.
And I will try to be as quick as possible here, there are thirty-six slides, but this was the presentation that's been going around as what, on what we've been calling the roadshow to the various integrated regional water management groups in the Tulare Kern funding region. And I realize that we have some new board members, and so not everyone might be familiar with the Integrated Regional Water Management Program, or IRWIM program. And this is an initiative that began several years ago, and various water bonds have appropriated money to these groups on a competitive basis. And so within Tulare County, there are five IRWIM groups, and in our funding region, there are seven, and we'll talk more about those, but this is something Tulare County has participated in for a number of years, and it's a way to get regional water projects funded. So, under Prop One, there was a set aside for disadvantaged community involvement in the IRWIM program, and the Department of Water Resources was responsible for rolling this money out. They began work on a RFP, or a Request for Proposals, about a year ago, the final version of that was released in the late summer, early fall of twenty sixteen, and this region has been working collaboratively since, for almost a year now, on developing a proposal. So, the DAC Involvement Program objectives, which are listed in the RFP, are these items: work collaboratively to involve DACs, community-based organizations and stakeholders, and IRWIM planning efforts, increase understanding and identify water management needs of DACs in the funding area, develop strategies and long-term solutions to address DAC water management needs. And the program requires that one proposal for the entire funding area be brought forward. Proposals, it says that they'll be accepted through January twenty seventeen, I'm not aware of any proposals that have actually been submitted yet, because as you can imagine, when you get into a funding region-wide proposal, it takes quite a bit of work to get all of the cats in the same room and decide on a scope of work and a, and a path forward. So, so we are, I think, ahead, part of that is because Tulare County administered a Tulare Lake Basin disadvantaged community water study, which was a good starting point, and it also provided those relationships with all of the groups that are in our region. And so eligible activities under the proposal are a needs assessment, that is the only one that is absolutely required, this is very similar to what we did under the TLB DAC study, and then the other eligible activities include education, community outreach, engagement, IRWIM efforts, facilitation, technical assistance, governance structures, site assessments, enhancements of DAC aspects and IRWIM plans, and project development activities or construction. So these are the seven IRWIMs listed, we actually have six and a half, so the Westside, all of these except for the Westside San Joaquin are completely within the Tulare Kern funding region, the Westside San Joaquin IRWIM is in both ours and another. And there they are on a map, so you can see Tulare County has five within our boundaries, and then we have a couple of others that are in Kern and Fresno Counties. And the funding area, you can't, the county lines aren't on the map, because even though we're integrated, we don't have a map that has all of the county boundaries and everything on them. The funding area covers all of Tulare County, all of Kings County, most of Fresno County, and the western portion of Kern. So the two previous studies that were sort of the foundation for the proposal that's before you today is the Tulare Lake Basin disadvantaged community study, which was completed by Tulare County in twenty fourteen, and then the Kings Basin disadvantaged community pilot project study, which was completed in twenty thirteen. You'll recall that the TLB study was two million dollars, and the Kings Basin was a five-hundred-thousand-dollar effort that was focused in the Kings Basin. So, we have one funding area proposal, and currently it totals a little over three-point-four million, I'll go over that with you in a moment, but the dollar amount available is three-point-four million. It is proposed that the applicant be Tulare County. We developed the proposal through a work group that included IRWIM representatives, county representatives, not only from Tulare County, but also from the other counties involved, DAC representatives, consultants, and non-governmental organizations that have been participating in these efforts for quite a period of time. We're actually between this bullet point and the next bullet point, so we did a roadshow to all of the IRWIM groups, showed them this presentation, answered questions, and solicited feedback and support. We have support letters from six of the seven IRWIMs, and I actually was told this morning that the seventh is forthcoming, so we have full support in the region for the proposal and, and for Tulare County to be the applicant, and the next step will be to submit the proposal to DWR after your action today. We crafted a program charter and vision, because as you can imagine, when you get a lot of different interests in a room, we need to decide on what it is we're actually set out to do, and so conducting a needs assessment of DAC, supporting project development, and promoting ongoing DAC participation in IRWIM groups was the focus, and then the work plan and budget support these, these items. This will continue to be, to be firmed up and, and will evolve as the program rolls forward and as different elements come together. It is anticipated that we would form a project advisory committee, this committee would be similar to the SOAK Committee, but this is going to be a PAT Committee, and it's going to be a dynamic group of folks, which would include a member of each of the seven IRWIM groups, a member of a DAC community selected by each of the IRWIM regions, one tribal, and then an alternate for each of those, so a total of fifteen members, and they would be helping to guide and form up this program as it moves forward. And the, there would be consultants performing most of the proposed activities, and those consulting agencies would be determined at a later date. Each of the IRWIM groups has a consulting firm that they typically use for engineering services, and so there would most likely be a breakout between those seven firms. Any questions or comments so far? All right. So, within the proposal that's before you, we have these activities proposed, a needs assessment, project development, DAC engagement, education, third-party facilitation, a final report, which is required, project management, and grant administration. So as I mentioned, the needs assessment is required, we would use the existing database that was created in the TLB study, and we would update that with new data, it hasn't been updated since we imported the two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve data. We would look to have a dynamic database that could be updated on an ongoing basis, that would include a web portal to make accessing the data easier by everyone involved. Obviously, we're not, we don't have an unlimited amount of money, and so these ideas and subtasks would need to be prioritized by the PAT, the group would need to decide what's most important to move forward and, and how that money would be spent. It was agreed upon by all IRWIMs that the lion's share of the money should go into DAC project development, and so you'll see in the budget that the most, most of the money ended up in this task, and it would be, different project types are eligible, most likely it would be engineering services, however, if an IRWIM group had a DAC project that was ready for construction, it could move to construction, it could also fund environmental review, and the caveat there is that this program would be a two-year program, and so anything that would be undertaken with these funds would need to be completed within that two-year timeframe, which sometimes becomes a little bit of an issue. But this project development task would be IRWIM and disadvantaged community-driven. There's a task for DAC engagement and education and outreach, this is envisioned to be an actual person or persons that would go out and solicit feedback from the DACs and the IRWIMs and help bridge that gap, developing educational materials and doing various activities under that. Again, what this actually looks like will be driven by that PAT, so that the IRWIM groups can, can be comfortable in the services that they're receiving, as well as the DACs are getting their needs met as well. And this was a, something I developed to help the IRWIM groups understand how that all might work together. Proposed third-party facilitation, there's, as you can imagine, when you get seven different interest groups, or actually fifteen different interest groups in a room, there may need some need for facilitation, and so we've included that to help the PAT at key decision points. There's a requirement for a final report, and then, just as in the Tulare Lake Basin disadvantaged community study, we partnered with Provost and Pritchard to provide project team coordination, this gets to be a massive program and project, and you need, it's more than just myself can handle to do all these subconsultants and roll all of their work into quarterly reports and final reports. So Provost and Pritchard is recommended to, to do those services, of course, that, I would bring something back at a later date for the board to approve that. And then this would be the county's share for grant administration, and these are all the tasks that would be provided by that. And then there's, within your packet, I'm going to sort of go through these next slides, there's deliverables that would be expected or that are proposed out of each task, and then this is probably the most important and fun slide, this is the, the budget. So you'll see that two million dollars is proposed to go to actual project So you'll see that two million dollars is proposed to go to actual project development. I know that's something that this board has been actively pursuing and lobbying for, that we get projects built or get projects to the next phase so that they can be built, and so this very much reflects that. You will notice that currently the project proposal is eighty thousand dollars over the three-point four million that's available. We need to understand from DWR whether or not the proposal development, which at this point has cost about forty thousand dollars, if that's an eligible expense. If it's not, then there would be another forty thousand that would need to be taken out of another task, but we would work with our IRWIM groups and those that are on the project development team to finesse the budget, so that when we get to an agreement, it would be the three-point four million that's available. And then I'm not going to go through the rest of the slide, there's some flow charts about how the project advisory committee would work if you have trouble sleeping at night, those are great tools to read through, they'll get you right to sleep. But at this time, I'll entertain any questions or comments, and the request before you today is to just approve, to submit the proposal, and then once an agreement was finalized, I would bring that back to the Board for consideration and approval.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Supervisor Crocker.
The engagement and education piece, having a lead, would that be, since Tulare County would be the applicant, would that be an employee of Tulare County, or how would that?
Possibly, there of course would be some potential concerns with that being in a grant-funded position. I think what the project team that's working on this has kicked around is potentially contracting that service out with one of our existing NGOs that does that type of work, and that way we're not creating a position that may have to go away. But that's something that would be developed as the program moves forward, to figure out how to exactly go about doing that.
And then do we know, as far as, do we have any shovel-ready projects that might be, that would fit within the parameters of that for construction?
There was only one, in our roadshow, the feedback I got, there was only actually one potential shovel-ready project in the Kern funding region. It was significantly more than what's available through this program. The ongoing challenge has been that disadvantaged communities don't have the resources to get their projects shovel-ready, so what we would be looking at here is to get those projects shovel-ready. There will be a round of implementation, which is actual construction monies that would be available. Right now, the timing on that is end of twenty eighteen, so our hope would be that a lot of this work would be complete in time to access that funding for these projects. Also, I know that there's a member of the public here that may wish to speak to this, and before I forget.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from board members?
Maria Herrera with South Health Enterprises. I'm just here to encourage the Board to move forward with this proposal and thank Denise and others that have been working on, with the entire region to get to this point. Again, thanks for the leadership role that this county continues to play in addressing the needs of disadvantaged communities. We look forward to continuing working with all of you. Thank you.
Anything else from board members?
No.
All right.
I'd move for approval.
Second? I have a motion by Supervisor Anis, a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to give a lengthy PowerPoint presentation? We've got several today. Okay, seeing none, this meeting is concluded. At the open session portion, council, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, items B through G and I are on for closed session. Items A and H are off calendar, and I do anticipate announcements.
All right. Thank you very much for attending today's meeting. Remember, next week's meeting's in the evening.
Where is it?
In Lindsay.
Lindsay.
This is Deanne Peterson, Associate County Counsel, announcing out of closed session today. February twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, at twelve forty-five, in the matter of Sisto, Edward versus County of Tulare and Rodney W. Parker, Tulare County Superior Court Case VCU two-six-seven-five-three-three. Comma, item F, on the Board's closed session agenda, the Board voted to provide a defense with a reservation of rights to Rodney Parker on the motion of Supervisor Anis, seconded by Supervisor Crocker, and on a unanimous vote. And, in the matter of Montoya Julian versus Tim Ward, Tulare County Superior Court Case VCU two-six-eight-zero-one-zero. Item G, on the Board's closed session agenda, the Board voted to provide a defense with a reservation of rights to Tim Ward on the motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Anis, and on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.